Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a board work session on Thursday, October the 8th, 2020 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, October the 12th, 2020, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As a Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a PIP public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in a closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. We will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode, which is exactly what I'm going to do because I haven't done it yet. I'm sure y'all all did the same. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance tonight of this evening. We have one, Mr. Ryan Irving, front row. Thank you, Ryan, for being here. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision, and mission statement, recognitions, board comments, citizen participation, and addendum to the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, October the 12th, 2020. At this time, we will proceed with public comments portion of the agenda. Four. Patrons who are duly registered per policy BED Local may address the Board and make public comments on an agenda item during or before the Board's consideration of the item. The Board may allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The Board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. We have no one signed up tonight. Before we proceed to the public hearing portion of the agenda Hold on a second. Okay. Before we proceed with the public hearing portion of the agenda, I would like to let the viewing audience know that each month during the work board work session, the administration provides oral reports on various departments in addition to the reports outlined in the district's board monitoring system. The board monitoring system, a mechanism to measure the district's progress in achieving goals, may be viewed on our website under About Us, District Improvement Plan/Gos. And now for the public hearing portion of the agenda. Do we need to do anything or can we go right into it? Are we setting up anything? Okay. The Board will hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Thursday, October the 8th, 2020 on the 2018 through 2019 districts' first accountability rating. Karen Smith, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Covey, Dr. Henry, and the Board. I'm here to present to you today the first results for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And school districts are required to report on their results within 60 days of receiving those results. And I just want to highlight that the results I'm talking to you about today is for 2018, 2019. They run about a year behind our actual fiscal year that we're reporting on. The first history related to this is that the legislature put this system in place to hold districts accountable for their financial management practices, as well as to provide the maximum allocation of our resources towards instruction and to evaluate the financial management practices of school districts. Cyfair has earned the highest rating that we can possibly receive, which is superior since the inception of the program in 2001, 2002. You will see here that there are four different ratings a district can receive: superior, above standard, meet standard, and substandard achievement. The first objectives are to have a system that is simple and understandable and that can be applicable to all school districts, as well as being based on hard data. That hard data is our PMS data that we report, both budget and our actual financial data, as well as our comprehensive annual financial report. It also is to analyze our financial management efficiencies and be an early warning sign towards solvency issues. And then transparency. The first rating system is based on 15 indicators. However, there is actually one indicator, it's indicator number five, that's not scored. The reason that one's not scored is it's basically school districts would fail it, and it's a critical indicator, which I will explain in a few minutes what that means. And the reason school districts aren't doing well on it because it has to do with how we have to do our pension accounting now that was a new requirement. Also, Cyfair received the highest rating on 13 of 14 indicators that were scored. So also included in this report, you should have on you, in front of you, a copy of the annual financial report, as well as a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. Included in the appendix of this report is the superintendent's contract that we must disclose. That is actually the current contract. School districts are required to either disclose it in the first report or put it on the district's website. In addition, we have to report on reimbursements to the superintendent and to the Board, and that is actually in Appendix 2, and I believe it's on page 21 if you wanted to see what we reported. And then in addition to that, we also have to show about any outside compensation to the superintendent in exchange for professional or consulting services, as well as gifts of 250 or more to the superintendent or the Board members or their families, and then business transactions between the district and Board members. And you will see in figures A3 through A5 that there's nothing to report on those particular The critical indicators that I alluded to a few moments ago, there are five critical indicators, and if you fail any one of these indicators, then you fail first. First of all, the annual financial report must be filed by the deadline to the Texas Education Agency. They must have, we must have an unmodified opinion on our annual financial audit report. And also, we must be in compliance with the, compliance with the payment terms of our bonded debt agreements and not defaulted on any of those payments. We also have to have timely payments to the state and federal agencies. That would be like TRS or IRS or something like that. And then, as I indicated, the next item is not being scored. There are also two other types of indicators. There are either solvency indicators or financial competence indicators. There are seven solvency indicators, and they are designed to detect early signs of solvency-related issues. An example of that would be how many days cash on hand we have, the district has, and then the financial competence indicators. And there are three of those, and they're designed to show the quality of the district's financial management procedures. So an example of that would be if there were any errors between our PMS reporting data that we submit and our comprehensive annual financial report. One of the indicators that I always like to highlight is the administrative cost comparison. That is indicator number 11, that, and that indicator, you'll see for the last five years that the district has been well below the threshold. The threshold for a district that has 10,000 or more students is 8.55. And that, that cost ratio is looking at the cost for school leadership, as well as administrative costs, which would be what you're used to hearing, which would be function 41, and that's divided by instruction, library services, staff development, and then counseling is that what that ratio is. Now, what I also would like to remind you of is the district's general administration expenses are only 1.8% of total expenditures, and that is much lower than the average in the state, which now is a little over 4%. I'd like to highlight some of the districts in our area. These are ones that I guess you could say in the local area, as well as some of the larger districts in the state of Texas. You will see here that Spring Branch has an, or Spring, rather, has an administrative cost ratio of 10.57. And then the second largest district in the state, which is Dallas, has 8.53%. And then the largest school district in the state, Houston ISD, has an administrative cost ratio of 5.97%. And for this reporting period, our administrative cost ratio was 3.77%. So as you can see, we have one of the lowest cost ratios, or administrative cost ratios in the area, but as well as comparing to the largest districts within the state. Now I'm available to answer any questions that you may have over the presentation or in review of the annual financial report.
Okay. I'll start at this end. Gilbert, do you have anything? Not yet. Tom?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Karen, I imagine you're going to be ready for this. I tend to be very predictable. So we had exceptional scores on all of our indicators, but if we take a look at page three, indicator number eight, we had a score of four. And this talks about the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets as being a measurement of solvency. Now, if this were a publicly held company, it would mean one thing, but we aren't. So explain why this is or is not a concern for us from a solvency perspective.
You're correct. I anticipated your question, Mr. Jackson. And first of all, I want to highlight that for school districts that are growing, even though we're not growing at the rate we were, we're growing at a rate enough to have fairly large, you know, bond issues as well as authorizations. So anytime you're selling the kind of level of bonds that we're selling, it's very hard to get a perfect score. But if you want to compare us, for example, like to a manufacturing company. A manufacturing company has assets, and those assets are, end up generating revenue. But for a school district, the way it is, is that all of our debt is showing up on our government-wide financial statements, almost as if we're going to pay it immediately, all of that debt. However, all the assets are not on the financial statement. So for example, we're fixing to sell bonds at the end of October. We'll be, we're going to be selling about 297 million in bonds. We'll get that money in, and we will incur according to the way they calculate it, the debt, so to speak. However, it'll be three years before you're going to see all those assets on our books. So it's really not a good comparison of looking at it. So the way the school districts really, if you want to look at their revenue, it's more based on looking at our property values and what, what revenue we bring in because of those property values.
So a follow-up question on that. So what you're saying is the property values is what we look to, to pay off the debt?
Yes, sir.
Then it asks the questions. If we take a look at what our tax rate is, is that outrageously high to pay off this debt? Or is it in line? Or is it lower than surrounding districts? Because if those are the assets that we're looking to create the revenue, we still have to have some type of gauge to determine, are we at an appropriate level, even though it's not going to be measured by this report?
We are, we are based on the amount of debt that we have and based on our property values. We are. And a way to, you know, kind of look at that, that you, that even really further reflects it, is that we've been lucky enough because of where our property values have been and then properly managing our debt and how we do our debt. For example, refunding, having variable rate debt also. We've been able to manage our debt very well so that our debt service rate has not gone up.
Another way we can look at it is when outside rating agencies look at us, what is our, our current rating if we do not use the one where we look that the, the debt is guaranteed by the permanent fund?
Our rating is a double A, both, it's a double A1 with Moody's and standards and poor's, it's a double A. And what those, in fact, it's funny, I just had conversations with our rating agencies this week. And what they look at is really three different things. They want to look at your enrollment and what's happening with your enrollment, and they want to be sure if you're having these huge declines, that you're not building assets. They also look at your property values and what your property value growth has been in the area. And then they also look at what our fund balance is.
So those are very high ratings, right?
Yes, sir.
Another question. In the back, you talk about the number of years, consecutive years that, that we have received outstanding ratings. Does everybody in the state of Texas get all the same ratings like this?
If you're referring to the comprehensive, are you referring to the comprehensive annual financial report?
Well, well, we have three different types of financial ratings, right? We have the first rating.
Correct.
Then in the back, we also talk about
The Association, the comprehensive annual financial report award from the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Officers Association. And we've gotten, with ASBO, it's 25 years in a row, and 24 years with the Governmental Finance Officials Organization, Association, rather. And those particular ones, very, actually, very few districts actually report and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. One of the reasons that I think a lot of districts look at doing it, one is to be transparent because it has 10 years' worth of information, but the other reason is the rating agencies really like to see that history, to see how school districts are doing, and it's a sign of their solvency and their management of their financial assets.
So to rephrase what you said, and I love putting words in other people's mouths, we do have high accolades, but it's not something that's handed out to everybody. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. The only other comment I would make, the politician in me loves to see the administrative cost ratio being really low. You know, I love to tell people out in the public, right? But in times of stress, and I brought this up, Mark, before, and I'll bring it up again, in times of high stress like this, it identifies a potential area of weakness. Not my job to tell you to hire people, but it is my job to let you know when I have a concern, and so I'll express that concern, and I'll probably do it more than once before this year is out. So Chief Financial Officer, Smith, thank you very much for a very comprehensive report.
Absolutely.
That concludes my question, sir.
Mr. Covey, just, just want, and Karen, you may have to help me on this.
Sure.
But at, at one time, Mr. Jackson, there were only like four school districts in the state that had received the superior first rating for the past 12, 13 years, and we were, we were one of those four, so.
That was the answer I was looking for, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Biccher? Nothing? Dr. Ogletree?
No questions. Excellent report. Great.
Thank you.
Julie?
No additional questions. Thank you for the information.
I will, excellent report, Karen, and you can go ahead and sit down. I'm just going to tell you, last week in talking with one of the trustees at Austin ISD, and he was saying how he uses Cyfair on a regular basis in their meetings because, number one, they've got 129 schools, where we don't have near that many. We have probably 40,000 more students than they do, and he always refers to this administrative cost ratio and how they're so far out from what we are. You know, he keeps asking what my secret is, and I told him, Tom, so.
Mr. Covey, just to add to that, the district most closely aligned with Cyfair ISD is Northside out of San Antonio. They're about 10,000 students smaller than we are. We have 92 campuses. They have, I believe, at last count, 124. So there is a lot of cost savings when you have 30 fewer franchises, if you want to call it that, to operate.
Awesome. Thank you, Karen. That was wonderful. Now we will proceed with reports portion of the agenda. 8A, in accordance with the Texas Education Code and the State Board of Education Regulations, the president of the CFISD Board will announce the name of each board member who has completed, exceeded, or who is deficient in the continuing education required under state law. That will be reported on Monday, and I will tell you, if Don's here, no one has to stand up. I'm just going to tell you. 8B, the administration will provide an oral report on the additional expenses required for 2020 through 2021. Dr. Henry?
Thank you very much. Just a, just a little quick lead in. Again, Karen is going to, let me take this off. Karen is going to do the heavy lifting on, on this, but just as we are talking about those additional expenses, I just wanted to make the Board, which the Board probably already knows, but the community also, that the state of Texas did extend the home, hold harmless provision for ADA at least through the first 18 weeks of the, of the school year, which is a huge help because districts across the state are anywhere from 2% to 7% below what their estimates were for students this year. And the biggest part of that for Cyfair ISD, and it's reflected across the state, is your pre-K and K. About half of our numbers are those younger children that have never started school, which makes sense. You know, parents just said, you know, I think I'll just, as someone told me one time, they're just going to give them a red shirt year and, and start them a year later. So that's, that's, you know, that's something that we certainly appreciate the state taking in to account. And then the other big part is Karen goes through this, and she's going to be talking about the additional expenses, and you'll hear from some legislators who say, well, you didn't have school last spring, so you saved a bunch of money. That's not exactly true, and Karen may touch on that a little bit, but actually, it's costing not millions of more dollars, but tens of millions of more dollars to try to account for COVID last year and this year. So just giving a little lead in, and then Karen can give you the details.
I appreciate that, Dr. Henry. I know last board meeting, Julie asked that we do an update, and Tom's asked for some additional information also, so I'm excited to be able to talk to you about this. And, you know, before I start, I would just like to share, you know, Dr. Henry said something about 1920 and that the legislators think we're ahead. Basically, what happened for Cyfair ISD is, yes, we saved money, and we saved monies in the areas of transportation because we weren't driving students, therefore, we weren't paying for the fuel. We saved money with utilities because we didn't have people in the buildings. We had saved money on substitutes because we didn't have school going on, you know, and so those particular areas are areas where we're not going to see those things.
We didn't, we didn't have face-to-face school going on.
Correct. I'm sorry, I didn't say that exactly right. You're correct. We didn't have face-to-face school going on. And because we didn't have face-to-face in the building, there were costs that we just simply did not incur. But there were other costs that we did incur. If you recall, we had instructional packets that we delivered. We had to purchase, we did purchase PPE when we were planning for this before COVID actually hit so bad that the schools were closed. So we had costs that we incurred, overtime that we incurred, all the, everything that the curriculum department had to do. We purchased Schoology. So we had costs that we incurred last year, but those, those reductions in costs offset it to where we were fairly even. We were not ahead. So I just wanted to set that straight starting out. So I thought I would start out by showing you the 2020-21 budget and remind you of the, what the revenue sources were, that we had an estimated revenues of $1 billion that is made up of our local revenues, which is primarily property taxes. I don't really have any concerns in that area as far as those revenues, because the way it works is that your values are set based on what your values are on January 1, 2020. So that was pre-COVID, so I feel very good about that, and our values came in with about a 5% increase in values, which is exactly what I was expecting. Then you'll see the next large portion is state revenues, which Dr. Henry alluded to the fact, we're very thrilled that they extended the home harmless, so it's three, six weeks, because that will be very beneficial since our enrollment is down. Then I wanted to remind you of what deficit the district adopted with the budget. We had $1,040 in expenditures, but then we had a deficit of $39.8 million. What that included, if you recall, was $10 million that we budgeted for COVID-19 expenditures. So here is the budget update for 2020-21, and I believe that Julie had said, could you show us this information by fund so that we can see the different areas that were affected? So you will see here, we've divided it up in three categories, and I'll go into a little more detail with some of these categories in a moment, but we divided it up, showing you the effect on the general fund, the food service fund, and then bond funds. So as you will see here, the general fund, we have already incurred or expect to incur, and I'll explain a few of those in a minute, cost of about $16.1 million. These costs, the payroll, are expenditures that we've already incurred. For example, overtime with technology to work very hard to prepare all the devices that needed to be prepared. Technology also had to keep open the help desk for extended periods of time to answer questions for our parents and our students. In addition, we have a help desk open with, for the nursing. Operations has put in additional overtime. The police department has put in additional overtime. They're also at the Berry Center, making sure and protecting our devices, so there's been additional overtime there. Our registrars, we called our registrars back early to assist us with working through, finding out when, with the students that are enrolling online, with online enrollment, that we process those kids quickly so that they can answer the surveys and, and also helping us with some of that information. And in addition, transportation. They are having to clean the buses when they return for the next day for the students, and so they've had some overtime associated with that. Then we've got non-payroll costs that we've incurred, and I will go into more detail on that in just a minute. And then another thing that you might not think about is the lost revenues that we incur. For example, rental of facilities, athletic gate receipts if we don't have as many games, concessions, food service revenue. So that, if you look at food service, which is the next one I wanted to go over, for example, you'll see here, we've lost about $2.2 million in lost revenues. That reflects about 155,000 of estimated, what we think will occur as far as interest income, because interest rates are down, but a majority is actually lost revenues because we don't have as many à la carte sales. We're not really selling à la carte. We also have a lower participation, but we have the same number of people here, you know, that, that we're paying, but our revenues are down because of that. In addition, we, our revenue are down with the general fund. If you think about the community programs area that, that we may not have had operating full, that's fully, you know, as, as it has been this whole school year, and also not as many parents are maybe sending their kids. And then the bond funds primarily are the devices that we purchase, the Chromebooks. And then the bond funds primarily are the devices that we purchased, the Chromebooks, as well as the hotspots that we purchased to go to one-to-one program. And then you'll notice that we had some lost revenues in the bond funds. With that reflects, once again, is interest income, because we anticipate we will receive less because the interest rates are down. And you might ask, well, why do you not have that much in the general fund associated with that? I already included that in my budget that the board adopted. I assumed that our interest rates would go down, so that most of that was already incorporated into the budget, as well as a little bit related to our ADA being down. So if you, the detail associated with this is if you look at the costs that are non-personnel related, now bear in mind, this is all three funds, the general fund, food service, and bond funds. But so far, we've encumbered $46 million, or almost $46.7 million in technology, close to half a million in personal protective equipment, and then $5.1 million for social distancing and protective measures. A big majority of this is the Plexiglas for the desks for the students to help protect, you know, between the students in the classroom, and especially as they return. We actually, you'll be, you have an agenda item with an additional million in Plexiglas for the desks, as kids are returning, because we will have more kids in the second session, grading period, returning to school. We need to make sure that we can protect the kids to the best of our ability and our teachers. In addition, sanitation supplies of $1.5 million, and this is the supplies and also the misters to be able to spray, like the buses and things like that. Also, I mentioned to you already, the overtime and supplemental pay that we've incurred. Also, substitutes associated with COVID, we included that in here at this point in time. And then also the COVID leave, because that is something that the federal government is requiring us to offer, and we have to get a substitute for that. So I included that in there. And then also Qualtrics. It's a program we are purchasing, or which we already purchased, that will actually be our dashboard to report the statistics related to the COVID-19 incidents with the district. Then the lost revenues that we have incurred so far in 2020-21. Interest income, this is an annual amount. We've already annualized it out that we expect to incur. On food service, the amount that's listed here, this is just for July through September. So there's additional that could be incurred between now and then, depending on how many students return, and also the, what we do with the à la carte meals. Also, facilities use, you see here, 404, 900, as well as catering concessions and athletic gate receipts of $178,000. Community programs, so far, we have lost about 224,000 in, associated with fees with community programs up to this point in time, and then private music lessons, because right now we are not having those private music lessons that we would normally have. So I'd like to go over some of the federal funding that the district may receive that might assist us with some of these additional expenditures. The first thing that you will see here, you've heard of the CARES funding, and when they're usually talking about CARES, what they're talking about is the ESER funding that the districts received. This money that we received was to, basically what the state did is they supplanted our state aid, and it made it where it may look, oh my gosh, you're getting $17.4 million, but we're really not getting any more money. What they did is they actually reduced our ADA for 1920 down, they just kept reducing it until our state aid was reduced by this $17.4 million. So we really received no more money. What I did in looking at this and analyzing and visiting with Dr. Henry is we looked at strategically, when is the best time to draw down on that money? The district had, we drew down about $2.8 million for 1920, and we applied it towards utilities. The remainder of it, about $15 million, is what we'll be drawing down in 2021, and that's really for two reasons. First of all, most of our expenditures are going to be in 2021. We could have drawn them down last year because our reduction in revenue occurred in 1920. But we were able to be very close to breaking even. We're not quite there, but very close to breaking even, and we felt we would maximize it for this coming year in 2021 to help offset our expenditures. So about $17 million of that, we will be able to recoup this year. In addition, we applied for what's called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. This particular one seemed like a wonderful opportunity for school districts in that you could get up to 250 per student that is in the compensatory education program, or you're counting the compensatory education, which would have been for our district, close about $16 million. However, this program was very, very restrictive. It was only for expenditures that the districts occurred from March 1 through May 20. So you can only imagine that a majority of our expenditures happened after that point in time. Therefore, we were able to claim close to, thanks to Amanda and Melissa McIner and their team working so hard on trying to recoup as many expenditures as possible, we turned in about a little over 10 million, but we only get reimbursed 75% of those costs, similar to how FEMA does it. So, and we've had a lot of departments that I want to just say thank you, that worked very hard to provide us the information so that we could claim these costs. In addition, we applied for something called the Provider Relief Funds. It's about $463,000. This relates to, school districts could apply for it if they had SARS money that they were receiving, and it's basically 2% of your 2018 SARS federal money. So we have turned that one in also. Some other opportunities we might have is Operation Connectivity. You may recall, we talked about this when we bought the, or came to the board about the one-to-one devices and going one-to-one. We chose not to go with the state program for several reasons, one of which was that the type of device and the caliber of those devices were not up to the district standards for our curriculum. So we chose not to go with those particular devices. But we may have the opportunity, basically after they have looked at everybody that wanted to participate in the program, they will look, the state will look, TEA will look and see how much money is left over, and there may be an opportunity for school districts to receive a reimbursement for items that they have purchased. So we're hoping that will occur. We're supposed to find out any day now. They said it would be sometime in October, so we're hoping that we'll hear something positive related to that. In addition, there may be some FEMA money available, however, I'm not really sure at this point how much will be available. That's like the last thing that we apply for, because it's, FEMA money is after you exhausted all your other resources. And really, it's very restrictive. And what we're finding out is everything that we thought we might could claim through that, such as PPE, they're saying we cannot claim through FEMA. So, and then the other might be other stimulus money. You know, you've been hearing what's going on with the federal government about possible additional stimulus money, so we're hoping there may be some additional money. I will tell you that there is CARES money out there that has not, that has been given to the governor, but that has not been appropriated to anybody yet. So it's very, I think that's one of the areas where we need to push to have them appropriate that money towards school districts. In addition, this, the Coronavirus Relief Fund that I already mentioned to you, that very few districts, or at least that's what we were hearing, they kept sending out notices that not many districts had applied for the money. Well, the reason was, as I mentioned, it was very short period of time, and some districts just hadn't incurred those costs yet. It was after May 20. In addition, it was very restrictive on what you could claim. It had to be something that wasn't budgeted, it had to be related to COVID-19. There was a lot of criteria associated with it, and it was a very, very cumbersome process. So some districts, if they weren't going to get much money, just decided to forego the money. So I know that there's probably additional funding available associated with that that we, you know, need to push our legislators towards. So I'm available to answer any questions that you might have on the presentation.
Okay. This time I'll start on Julie's end. Do you have anything, Julie?
Yes. Karen, thank you so much for the information. That is, oh, I moved. I'm sorry, John T. I'm told not to move. I'm supposed to stay right in my spot so I don't block. I apologize. So thank you for the information. One of the drivers for why I asked for more specifics about how we were experiencing and having to use excess dollars or extra expenditures due to the coronavirus and due to the pandemic is, as you said, some of our legislators are reluctant to distribute some of these funds that have come into the state. And so this is helpful for us when we go to advocate for why we need these funds to be released to school districts. Also, I heard the head of the House Public Ed Committee and the Senate Education Committee of Texas talk about fund balances, how schools, some school districts, because of good financial management, have strong, healthy fund balances. And there was some discussion of, well, rather than the state helping school districts out, maybe we'll just let the school districts dip into their own savings accounts, which to me feels like it penalizes school districts who have been good financial stewards of their tax dollars. And I also find it ironic from a state government that is reluctant to dip into their own savings accounts, à la the Rainy Day Fund, to support school districts. So this is helpful information for us to share when we do go to our elected officials at the state level to help us advocate for the state also using its savings accounts as well, since obviously we're having to do the same thing.
Well, Julie, and if I might add to this, is, you know, that's a very good question. And one of the things that's actually come up associated with it is the state's Rainy Day Fund really is their savings account. It's their rainy day fund. However, school districts, it is not our rainy day fund, because what you have to look at is, first of all, if you're a June 30 year in, it's five months before we start collecting tax receipts. So we've got to have enough fund balance to be able to pay payroll and incur cost until our tax numbers starts, our tax dollars start coming in. So you, school districts with a June 30 year in really need an additional two months in fund balance, is what the recommendation is. In addition, you also have to look at things like some of the money that appears to be ours, I guess, right now, we may be having to return, for example, some portion of state aid to the state if we were overpaid based on the prior year. In addition, we have grant money that, we make those expenditures and we draw down the money after the fact. So we're kind of floating, I guess you could say, expenditures for a period of time. In addition, that happened with COVID. If we hadn't had this, you know, such a healthy fund balance, some of this would be much scarier than it really is. And in addition, the other item is they recommend having, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends you having more fund balance if you're in an area where you have a lot of natural disasters, and because it's so long before you ever recover that FEMA money, and possibly insurance.
Nothing, Sarah? Ms. Blacksher, do you have anything?
Question. When you were discussing the various fund programs and relief programs out there, Karen, what about if we needed, felt a need that we needed more people to help? Because we are, everyone is burdened right now with the amount of work they're doing, and just like I'm understanding that, like, the contact tracing is taking a lot of time. If we decided we needed to say, for example, and I'm just hypothetical, needed to hire more Paris to help with that, can any of that, those funds be used for that purpose?
That's an excellent question, and the issue is, if you recall with the Coronavirus Relief Fund, yes, we could with some of that. We did claim some extra associated where we had to pull people in and help us with various areas, whether it be the help desk, whether it be nursing or whatever, but that was only for March 1 through May 20. And so we're incurring those costs now. So right now, there's no funding available for that particular area. Remember ESER that I was sharing? That's really just offsetting state aid, and so it's no new money. But that's an excellent question.
Debbie, I want to answer that in a more general term, and I think everyone that's on the DLT, we had a district leadership team meeting today, and my message to the DLT was, whatever it takes this year, to get through this year, that's just what it costs. And there are going to be some additional expenses that we don't know about yet, or that we possibly need more people, that we will be coming back to this board of trustees. And I've told Karen, we'll worry about 21, 22, when we get to 21, 22, but we've got to get through this school year with whatever it takes. Now, I'm a glass half-full kind of guy, and I believe that after we get past the election and once we get into the new year, I do think there's going to be some federal dollars. I know you can't rely on that, but I think both major parties understand and realize that if you start, if you start letting a lot of policemen and firemen and teachers go because there's no way to pay them, then we're going to have a big problem. So I'm confident that that's going to happen. We may not see the effects of that until later winter, early March, but, and also, this is going to shock some people in here, I think the state's going to step up and do some of their part also. So I'm remaining optimistic that this is unprecedented, you know? The last time this happened was, what, 102 years ago? And so this is just a highly unusual situation, and we're going to do, and our, what we're going to be coming to this board with is whatever it takes to get through this unprecedented event this year. And like I said, because of your and this district's financial stewardship, this is not our rainy day, this is our Category 5 hurricane, but we can get through it because we've prepared for this.
Well, Dr. Henry, I'm really happy to hear you say that you've communicated, whatever it takes, we'll do, because I really, in talking with teachers and nurses and different personnel out there, I really know that we do need additional help, and I'm happy to hear that, you know, we're willing to do what it takes to get that. My question is, and I'm glad to hear you're optimistic about the state stepping up, I'm not sure what's driving that, but what can we do when we get money that gets funneled through the state and the state doesn't pass it on to us? That's just wrong in any way you look at it.
That is, this is nothing new. We expected it, that they would fill their hole before they worried about filling our hole, so we're not totally surprised by that. But I can tell you, and again, I've had some really good conversations, and I think it's because of the reputation of Sci-Fare, that I've had conversations with the House Public Ed Chair, many of our legislators. This extension of six more weeks of Hold Harmless was due to several superintendents, primarily, in all honesty, in the Houston area, saying, we've got to do something about this. So I think they're going to step up. They see a need.
Well, I do know, I've talked to my state representative, and he seems ready and willing to help wherever he can with us. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Good report. A couple of kudos, both for you Karen, but also for you Mark. Both of y'all said something tonight that was very significant. Debbie already pointed out, whatever it takes, absolutely what we wanted to hear from the captain of this ship. And speaking for myself, I know I'm wholly supportive of the concept. And 11 years of hearing the fund balance explained, I think you did the best job of explaining why we have the fund balance where we need. I'm reminded of the fact, and the man's a tremendous friend of public education, but Representative Huberty, who started out as a board member when he first ran as a state but Representative Huberty, who started out as a board member when he first ran as a state representative, he ran on the platform that school districts needed to spend their rainy day fund before they asked the state for any help. And it's important for us to, for the viewing public, but also for our stakeholders, to understand, we don't have a rainy day fund. And yes, we have been good stewards, but there's a reason, when you happen to live in this area and because of the timing of state funds, the fund balance that we have has to be where it is. I remember at the CLC meeting, when the good lieutenant governor came and spoke to us, he was shocked when your predecessor mentioned that we had a six-month fund balance. But what was not conveyed was the reason why we had it. And that wasn't a luxury. It's really a necessity. And we've bounced that idea back and forth, but I think you did the best job yet at explaining why we have to have it. One question that I wanted you to go back over, and this kind of ties into what Mark was saying. So, Mark, we're short, how many students approximately?
Right at 4,000. Teresa can probably give you the exact number, but that's a pretty good guess.
So, about 4,000, and the bulk of that is from pre-K and K. Linda, do you think, why or why not? And this ties into Karen's report, because it also looks forward. Do you think we'll have those numbers back next year, or do we just not know? You can't share the microphone.
While she's walking across there to give you an exact answer, I'm going to give you an answer that I think so much of it will depend on vaccines and therapeutics. I think that's a big part of it, but she can give you a specific.
Actually, that's exactly what I was going to say. It's unknown at this time. You know, pre-K and Kender are not required for attendance. And so, parents are choosing to keep them home. And even today, when I was visiting with Karen, it impacts our bilingual allotment as well, because one of the major ways that students qualify for pre-K is the second language. So, there's a lot connected in there.
And that's an excellent point you brought out, Mark. You know, the best information we have is sometime next May-ish, June, July, vaccines will be available, but it will take a long time to actually roll it out. I'm old enough that I went through the polio vaccine, all three doses and the sugar cubes. That took time to roll out. And we also know that, in the same fashion, not everybody gets the measles vaccine. Not everybody's going to get this. And the best guess is, it's only 50% effective. So, we will have this budget functionality that we'll be asking you to keep a very close eye on, and I know that you will. So, two side questions for that 3,500, 3,800, 4,000 number. Percentage-wise, how does that compare to other districts? Do we have an idea or a handle on that?
It's very comparable to other districts. I've talked to some of my colleagues that actually are in a district smaller than we are, and they're 2,500 to 3,000 students.
So, in fact, our percentage may be a little lower than other districts.
Of large urban suburban districts, our percentage is lower. Now, once you start getting out into the more rural counties, the smaller single high school towns, the percentage might come down, but...
Well, and that was my anecdotal observations, just talking to folks. There are places where the virus has not been felt as significantly, and so, the parental decision-making is different than what it is here. So, just a ballpark number, losing those 3,000 to 4,000 students, how big of a dollar amount is that? Just ballpark?
Well, you know, I mean, if you look at it, if we didn't have the Hold Harmless, it's over $20 million. It's about 25 million. But because we have the Hold Harmless, and then what you also have to take into account that pre-K is a half-day ADA. So, if you take that into consideration and maybe back down on that, it is somewhere, depending on what happens. Because, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Anywhere from, my guess, 10 to 14 million, somewhere in that range, since we have the Hold Harmless.
But still, a very big number, and that range of 10 to 14, even if we cut it in half, for next budget year, that could be like five or six. And it doesn't even talk about what's on Linda's side of the ledger.
And Tom, just to add, continue to add to that, well, people might say, well, you just, you just get rid of that, many teachers or something like that, which that doesn't work either, because we have online students, we have in-person students. And it's going to be very difficult for us probably to predict who's going to be here next fall. So, and there's no cost savings if you have fewer students, because our labor cost, 89% of our expenses, I think 89%, are labor, are personnel, payroll.
Well, and that's an excellent point. From business standpoint, teachers are actually a fixed cost.
Yes.
Whereas in the business world, you might think, oh, well, that's a marginal cost, but it isn't. These are absolutely fixed costs. So, another excellent point. Good report. Thank you.
Mr. Sarabia, you're up.
Outstanding job there, Linda, and kudos to your team for searching out all the possibilities of funding that you can possibly help with the district and everything. Very nice to make sure that they're recognized and stuff. And yes, a great job of being transparent with a certain understanding of how things work and stuff. Very, very, very good. And I'm also with Debbie on the, her question on, she had mentioned, and Mark's answer, whatever it takes this year. That's very welcoming to the community and for the employees too, of the whole district. Just want to commend everybody involved. Outstanding job.
Thank you, Karen. So, great report, as always. But let's talk about that federal funding one more time. Can you go back over the ESSER?
Sure.
Because I know what I heard, but I'd like for it a little bit more plainer for all of us plain people.
Absolutely. The amount of funding that we received was, or so they told us we were getting, is $17.4 million. Basically, the state utilized that funding to help supplement state aid in 2019, 20. Basically, lowering our state aid down until it equaled that amount of money supplanted. Correct. They supplanted it. According to the state, the reason they did it is they were hoping that it would, because of the lower property, I mean, not property taxes, sales taxes, oil and gas taxes, things like that, hospitality, industry taxes, that since all those were down, they were hoping that by doing that, then they were applying that money to this year, 2020, 21. But basically, that was no more new money. The district utilized 2.3 million to help us with last year's budget, since we were doing very well and we didn't have as many expenditures. Had we not put some of this towards this year, we would probably see about a $14 million, $14 to $15 million increase to fund balance in 1920. But we chose to kind of set it up where we would be close to breaking even and pushing that money where other expenditures were going to occur to try to help us in 2021.
So, pretty much, the state government made that decision on that money.
Correct.
Base, which is similar to something they decided about seven or eight years ago, if I remember correctly.
Yes, that was the ARA funding, which was the last stimulus money. You're correct.
It's amazing how the stimulus money geared for public education is a stimulus for the government. So, that's interesting. I'm sorry. Thank you, Karen. That was a great report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The board will discuss the superintendent's evaluation. We will move this to closed session at the end of our meeting this evening to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Eight day, the administration will provide an oral report on the 2020, 2021 Board Monitoring System. Teresa Hull, I believe you're starting this off.
Yes, just real quickly, President Covey, Board of Trustees, this evening, we'll be providing you with the administration's recommendations for modifications and changes to the board monitoring system. Just, you know, for the viewing audience, and then also, Mr. Sarabia as a new trustee. The Board Monitoring System is a document that this board established to monitor the district's progress toward achieving our district goals, aligned with those target objectives for each goal. And the document is also aligned with the superintendent's evaluation. All of these target objectives and progress towards achieving those are included in the superintendent's evaluation. And then, it's also aligned with our district and campus improvement plans. So, there is a district focus on achievement of these goals and these identified target objectives. This year, we decided to present the document to you in this meeting in a little bit different format. We're going to share the actual red line or track changes format that will allow you to easily identify the areas that we are recommending be modified or changed. And then, also, just to make certain that it's clear that this is not a final document. This is just our edits, our recommendations to you. The Board Monitoring System is your document. It's the areas that you have identified as critical and a major focus that you want to monitor our progress as a district towards achieving those. So, we're going to go through all of the six goals, and we can either stop at the end of each goal and allow for input and feedback, or if you would like, we can go all the way through all six and then, at the end, allow you to go back to each individual goal that you would like to make comment or suggestions.
If it's okay, let's take goal at a time. I think that's a good idea. Is that all right?
That's perfect. Well, we're going to begin with goal one, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Macias to talk about academic achievement.
Good evening again. So, goal one is the student academic achievement goal on your board monitoring system. As my team and I worked on the 2021 academic achievement targets for your consideration, we reviewed the achievement data for the last full year we completed, which was 2018 and 19. You may recall that in that year, the district earned a 92 rating by the state. This past year, 2019 and 20, our campuses, our district was on target again, was on track again, to earn a rating in the 90s. But as you know, the pandemic happened, and they weren't able to demonstrate that. Many of our principals were very saddened that they were not able to do that. The pandemic caused, as you know, gaps among many of our students and widened gaps for many others as well. We have shared with our campuses that our goal this year is to work to make us basically whole to where we were before the pandemic hit us, and then to move forward from there. So, as you look at the targets that we have before you for goal one, you will notice, or I will share with you, that they are the same as last year. We believe that these targets will allow our campuses to work, to close the gaps that have occurred with our students, and then to also move forward from there. So, the only change that you see for goal one is on that last column, and that would be updating the reporting timeline. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you want, you have questions now?
This is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
John?
Linda, I was wondering if some consideration, and I know we're in the COVID situation here, and that's really altering a lot of our effectiveness. But since grade three is such an important factor by grade three, I'm wondering, and I think, was it a few years ago, we had a little issue with the second grade, something, and second grade. Could we emphasize those that either grades one, two, and three? Something where we really hone in on making sure that we have some goals, that we are really making sure that our students have this. I'm just, if you understand what I'm saying.
So, yes, sir, a goal for primaries, basically what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay. We can certainly add a goal for primary.
Just one of the things that I would add, and I agree with Dr. Oakley Tree, that we need a goal there, but one of the things that we started, again, Linda may help me with here, but it's probably six years ago now, we started the Camp Summit. And the whole idea of Camp Summit was to make sure at K1 and 2, we got our, all of our students on level by grade three. But we probably need some specific goal.
Yes, we can certainly add a goal for primary. Yes, I'm sorry, a target objective. Thank you, Teresa. Yes, a target objective. That's a good, yeah.
Debbie?
Linda, do you think there's, and Dr. Henry, do you think there's any chance that we're going to be able to get the TEA to do away or give us another pass on the STAR exam this year? Because I just, I feel, under the conditions, that it is just not going to be an accurate depiction of our students' knowledge. I think this is going to be a really challenging year for both our students from a learning perspective with our hybrid model. And I just think the STAR test should not be anything that we need to be concerned with this year, nor our students. We, of course, are always going to teach the classes and do the best to our ability. But I really feel our students are going to be at a disadvantage this year, and I don't think the STAR test should be administered.
Let me answer that for Linda does again. I'm going to give general answer and then let her be more specific. The U.S. Secretary of Education has already stated that we will test this year across the country. So, I guess some of that will be determined in three or four weeks by an election if there is a new Secretary of Education. Secondly, the Commissioner of Public Education in the state of Texas stated that if you're not testing, really, all you're doing is talking. Now, I won't even comment on that.
Has he been in a classroom and observed?
Not as a profession, no. So, I would say, certainly, we think that probably there should be a moratorium on testing this year, simply because of the two methods of teaching that we're doing this year. We very well could have campuses that have to close because they have to be cleaned. I mean, there's going to be a lot of factors. But the bigger factor to us, even above testing, is what are you doing with those tests? Certainly, getting some baseline scores at the end of the year would be fine, but what are you going to do with those? Are you going to judge that campus or grade that campus or grade a school district based on a very, very difficult year?
Exactly, because of the pandemic and what our students and staff are experiencing, it's not... are experiencing, it's, it's not fair. It is just not fair that they have, that the state would have that expectation of testing students. And you're right, a moratorium on testing is what we need this year, because I don't care what kind of testing they do, this school year, it is not going to be an accurate depiction of our students' knowledge, nor of our teachers' abilities.
But, but, but just to be very clear, I think maybe even our teachers and, and, leaders and, and families, it's not the testing itself, it's what do you do with those tests? If they tested and would let districts use that information internally to have a baseline year, that makes some sense.
Right.
But teachers don't need any more pressure on them.
No.
Children don't need any pressure on them, and principals don't need any more pressure on them.
Exactly, that's my point.
It's what you do with the information.
Yep, thank you. I agree with Dr. Henry, it's not so much the testing, it's what, what's done with the information, as long as we, they allow us to use that test for formative purposes to see where our kids are at and where we need to continue supporting them, but not to, to, you know, not to identify our campuses as, as not doing their, their job when they're working as, as, as good as they can. I will share with you that, I agree with Dr. Henry, there, there's no indication right now that, that the tests will be, the assessments will be waived. In fact, the first one coming up is in December, and that's our, we have EOCs in December. And to further add to that, they are not allowing our Connect Kids to test at home. So they're requiring that all students who will be taking the EOC in, in, in December and during STAR time come to the campus to test.
And just to add to that, education, just like banking, we have, we have 10,000 acronyms.
Mm-hmm.
So EOC is End of Course Exam. I'm just, I'm just making sure the general public knows that.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Henry, yes.
Yeah, and, and that too is ridiculous, you know. There are just so many things out of our control at this time that, to me, is so frustrating because we just, our, our, our teachers, our students are already under enough stress adjusting to the new normal this year and how we are, are teaching, and to, to, to put that additional stress on them, I just am not happy about. I wish we had more local control, if you will, over that. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
A minor point of levity, if Don Ryan were, were here, he would ask you, Linda, what was the score of the Astros baseball game, right?
What was it?
Well, as a matter of fact, Gilbert just told me the Astros won 11 to 6.
Yay!
So, we have that out of the way. John made a very good point about third grade. And wasn't there a new law that directed us to review this as boards, as related to reading?
There, there is, and it, it is a primary reading, but the, what we're going to bring to you will be by campus, how the campuses are doing, that's what we're required to bring to you is, is the campus information, not a district, but by campus.
Right.
And so we will be bringing that to you probably, what did we decide, Ashley?
In December or January.
Yeah, in December or January. That was part of Hospital Three.
And so that can be folded in as part of this goal. A, a sub-goal, as it were, as opposed to a major goal, but given the pandemic, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, and my view on testing, we have to test. We have to test, we have to know where, where our students are. I do think that I, that the state should be patient and waive the analysis of the test, but internally, we still have to test. And we talked about our benchmarks, and we do these all the time. So a couple of questions. One, when do we start, remind me when we start the benchmarks, and when will you be able to come back to us to let us know, how big is, is the gap, how small is the gap?
We've started our, we call them DPM, District Progress Monitor, we started them in October this, this month, and we're not through with them yet. We hope to be able to have the information to you in November.
Okay, thank you, I'll, I'll look forward to that. And I would echo what Debbie said, you know, speaking for myself, I don't see using this from a punitive perspective, but I do think we have to know where are we? We, we talk about a K-level recovery, and the anecdotal observations I hear is that the K-level gaps are very real, and the bottom part of that, that letter K has to do with students who are learning at home, but, but also our Title I students, so there's layers upon layers. I think a more meaningful sub-goal on this is how, and you, you addressed it, but how do we address the gap that we all know is there between the beginning of the year and where, where we wind up? That may be the most meaningful measurement that we have from an internal perspective. We, we already know the Commissioners, I pointed out last time, said that the university study indicated Title I kids, by the time they started school in September, could have lost six full months. Well, that's tremendous. You know, that's a, that's a hurricane coming in, wiping out half a school year, right? And, and I know for myself, that, that would be the measurement that, that I would be looking at, is across the board, how, how good of a job did we do in, in filling that gap? So thank you.
Ms. Remia, nothing? Julie?
I just wanted to follow up on the question about testing. Dr. Henry, you, you mentioned that, or no, sorry, Dr. Macias, that the STAR test and EOCs will, must be in person, even for CFISD Connect kiddos?
Yes, they have to come to the school building.
But I thought all of STAR tests and EOCs were moving to online.
They, they have not all moved to online yet, that's, that's, that's coming.
Like next year, right?
That's coming. So our Connect, our CFISD Connect Kids actually could take the test online, but it still has to be at the campus. That is correct, I haven't figured out a way to do that, yeah.
Got you, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Dr. Macias, you want to proceed on?
Well, that's actually, that's, that's my goal with the, with the six different objectives. And as I mentioned, the only change you see for Goal One at this time is in the, in the reporting timeline, and then we will go back and pull an objective for, for, Tom's your, your request along with, with Dr. O's request.
Thank you, Dr. Macias, and I'm going to say this one thing, and it's been stated already, and this is not a time to be silent, community, this is not a time to be silent, teachers. You need to tell how you feel about the testing, and you need to tell your legislators, and you need to tell the Commissioner of Education and the State Board of Education. So find out who all those people are, and you need to contact them and tell them what your position is, because if you're quiet, they'll move ahead just like they think everything's acceptable. So I'm just telling you, okay? I'm suggesting, I'm not telling you anything. Goal number two, safe and healthy environment, district provide a safe and disciplined and healthy environment conducive to student learning, and, oh, there you are, Ms. Stewart, Dr. Stewart. So we're going to let Dr. Stewart make her whole presentation, then we're going to ask questions, okay?
So I have Goals Two and Three, so I'll do them, you want me to do them both or stop at one?
Let's do one at a time, yeah.
Okay. So for Goal Two, you just read the goal, thank you. And under Goal Two, we originally had five objectives, and we're recommending, moving forward, that we have six objectives. And if you look at Objectives One, Two, Three, and Four, the changes for those objectives are the dates. And so on those dates, we will be bringing you reports about the objective for this year. So for instance, Objective Number Three, to expand the implementation of Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, we'll bring that objective in an executive summary this month. For Objective Four, that's one of our changes. Last year, we asked you to recommend to develop and implement a research-based alternative option to out-of-school suspension. And as you know, it's important to adopt a comprehensive approach involving prevention, intervention, and follow-up strategies to avoid, limit, and/or mitigate the impact of students being removed from class, specifically suspensions, because we know that that impacts their academics. So in October, Dr. Ogumakee will provide you with a executive summary that shows the development of those strategies. So for this year, we've moved development, because you'll get a results of those developments shortly, and we're, for, what year is this, 2021, we will be implementing those strategies, and this time next year, we'll talk to you about the implementation. So we're asking for your recommendation to remove development and, because we're going to give you that information, and this school year, we will be implementing those. We're also asking that you add the fifth objective, to expand the implementation of No Place for Hate at all Cypher ISD campuses as stated in the Board of Trustees, your Equity and Diversity Resolution. So you ask this year that all campuses work on being designated as a No Place for Hate campus. This year, we had 73 campuses, and we are so excited, one non-campus transportation, they were all designated as No Hate, No Place for Hate campuses. So we're asking that you allow us to add that particular objective for the 2021 school year. And that is our recommendations for Goal Two. Are there any questions?
Okay, let's start over here. Gilbert, do you have anything? Ms. Jackson?
Safe and healthy environment, the, the comment I have, I don't think it, it pertains to this goal, but I think it'll, it'll pop up in another goal. I think the virus is going to be here for a long time, so somewhere in here, I want to make certain that one of our goals is that we are continuing to monitor a healthy, safe environment as it relates to the virus. So I don't know that it, by definition, it would go in Goal Two, but I think we may be talking about it over, in part, on, on buildings under Roy, or, or maybe it belongs here.
Or maybe under all the goals, we should do that.
Well, I don't know where it ought to go, but, but I'll just mention that, since we talk about that here, and I'll let you all figure out where to put it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Blacker?
Yes, I, I agree with Tom, that I think it needs to be fit in somewhere in there, just stated, and I'm also happy to see the, the number five goal that you added, Dr. Stewart.
Thank you.
I think that needs to be in there, and good job.
Dr. Ogletree?
I'm glad to see the addition here on number five, and I agree with Tom on that somewhere we should have that, but this is great.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinemann? Nothing? Great report, Deborah, and I will say, I, I'm tickled that there's a non-campus that's going to do the No Place for Hate, and I think that's wonderful to expand that to all of them, that's, that's, I don't know who came, but I'm sure that was my idea, but I'm glad it worked, okay?
Uh, Mr. Covey, I think they were actually No Place for Hate last year as well, correct? Three years in a row, so they were actually ahead of the curve.
Oh!
Thank you, Kane.
And he's in the back of the room, but that's okay. You want to move up to the front?
Right, right, and I think they may be the only, is it, correct me, Dr. Smith, if the only support service department in the state?
They are.
We're the only support department in the nation.
In the nation.
That has a No Place for Hate development.
Whoa!
Fantastic, thank you.
That's awesome, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Dr. Stewart, Goal Three, Human Capital, district will recruit, develop, and retain highly qualified and effective personnel reflective of student demographics.
Thank you. So Objective One, we're not asking to change or modify any of the objectives. Objective One, we probably should be more specific and add a date to that, we have spring 2021, so we would probably make that May 2021. Objective Two, we are asking for your recommendation to continue that objective and possibly the same May 2021. You challenged us last year to implement a recruitment plan to hire 100 pre-K teachers in 100 days. Hooray for pre-K, and I believe as a district, we were successful, so we are redlining that one out. And because of this, we have always focused on our substitute fill rate, and typically we have between a 70 and 75% fill rate, and we, we want to have a higher fill rate. However, during this COVID season, we have had as low as a 52% fill rate. So we are asking this year to add that objective, not just because of COVID, but we would, you know, we want to focus on increasing that 75%. So we're challenging ourselves, and we're asking for you to approve the objective to increase the substitute fill rate, teacher fill rate, and that lofty goal of 100%. We can do it, thank you. And, you know, our evidence of progress will be that all non-vacant teacher absences will be filled with a substitute. And we have been talking, we have a plan, we are going to survey our current substitutes and find out specifically why they're not accepting those jobs, and what resources are, what do we need to do so that they can accept the jobs? Because we can guess all day, but we are going to survey and find out. We know that this is a national crisis with substitutes, not just in the Cypher area, but we want to be the ones that find some solutions to that. So we have started, our survey is going out next, uh, next week, and we'll be working on increasing that substitute rate. So we're asking that you add, allow us to add that objective. And that completes my presentation for Goal Three. Any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Stewart. Ms. Heinemann, do you have anything?
No, no changes or additions, thank you for the information, and I am strongly supportive of maintaining our objective number one, I think that's very important for our district to ensure that our leadership reflects, the, the demographics of our leadership, and our teachers reflect the demographics of our, of our students. So thank you for that focus.
Thank you.
Ms. Blacker?
Dr. Stewart, would be, there be any chance that we could add to number four to also increase the substitute nurse fill rate?
Absolutely.
Because I understand that's, that's an issue as well, so I, I feel that would be great to add to that objective.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Goal Three, item number one, evidence of progress. I've talked about changing how we look, look at this every year, ever since we adopted the Board Monitoring Goal. And instead of taking a, a static or a stasis view, I've always suggested that if we look at the delta, it's more meaningful. I will remind myself that when you all were interviewed by Community Impact Newsletter, you all actually were willing to bring that data out. So I think that that would be valuable information on evidence of progress. And the reason why, why I focus on that is when we have a teacher, once that teacher gets past the five gets past the five-year mark, we typically are going to have that teacher for the next fifteen years. So it takes time to make changes. I fully support the concept of visibility that John and I have talked about for the past eight years, but I think we need to come up with a different way of measuring it. I'm not saying my way is the best, but we, we need to have a different way of measuring it. And I, I always enjoy looking at the delta.
Okay.
So, so perhaps the, looking at the delta is the proper way of doing it. I will also make the observation, and I'm not asking you to do anything about it, but I hear from any number of retired certified teachers that they would love to be recognized at a substitute rate that recognizes the fact that they do have a teacher certification versus those substitutes who may not. And in that same Sunday School class, when we actually used to have it, and I'm sure we will again, I, I am often teased by those who substitute for our neighboring districts, and they tell me that, that their level of compensation may be different than what our level of compensation is. So I would not be surprised if, when you come back, you and Karen come back and say, well, to meet that goal, you have to do, do things differently. And perhaps you don't.
Correct.
I'm, I only mention it because it, it dawns on me that, that we may have to look at that. And to kind of let us know, where do, where do we stand now in terms, and this is an unfair question, but I ask unfair questions all the time, so.
We do.
So you should not be surprised. So, so where do we stand on right now in these peculiar circumstances of having a full complement of teachers for positions? And those are teachers that have the qualifications, i.e. certifications, that that particular position may require. And, and of course, we have different types of certifications. And you mentioned that we currently have a fifty-two percent substitute fill rate.
Approximately, yes.
I think I know what that means, but would you remind me a, a little more simply what that means?
Yes, so, I'll say, if we have a hundred teachers that are absent, we have, what's that, forty-eight vacancies? Forty-eight positions are unfilled.
That kind of takes my breath away a little bit.
It does for us also.
However, I will mention, we aren't the only ones.
Correct.
During Tasa Tasby, the conversation with the commissioner, he alluded to that situation across the entire state.
Correct.
But merely that, that we aren't out there by ourselves, that's really kind of cold But we do have to be aware of where we are. So where are we on, on our teacher staffing? Do we have current numbers on that, or?
I do. They're probably at the desk. Let me get them. But I have that vacancy rate. I'll pull that for you. But I will like to say something, and I'll have to go back and get that, the staffing data, that for our substitutes, this year, we did something a, a little bit different. We allowed campuses to have, for lack of a better term, permanent subs, and so that these subs would report to their campus daily. We felt like that this would decrease the opportunity for substitutes to go from building to building to building. So they have the permanent subs, that we're calling them, and these subs are paid the long-term rate, and they are allowed to remain on the campus. They were trained on Schoology. They started the school year when the teachers started to get to receive all of the professional development. And so our principals have been very pleased with that, that they have a group of substitute teachers that they can count on every day. Also, right now, our numbers are lower, are low, at our DAEP, so you know, we have two. So we use those, they're not excess, but we use the, those staff members at our campuses. And the principals are very excited that there are certified teachers and peers from our DAEP that's supporting those absences. So those were all initiatives to address the shortage of subs, and we believe due to COVID, you know, just like our pre-K and K numbers are down, we don't know, but we'll know after the survey, that we feel that that's why many of our substitutes are not accepting those jobs. And then you want to know the vacancy. Sharita, do you have that data in front of you? Oh. Now I need my glasses. So we have a hundred and fourteen teacher vacancies. Is that what you asked me? Would you ask me?
So, so the answer is yes.
Yes.
However, I need to have some scale, so that's a hundred and fourteen out of?
Approximately seven thousand teachers.
So, so out of seven thousand, roughly one percent is seventy, so that's about a percentage and a half.
Yes.
And what do we typically run? Because we're never fully staffed.
We actually, I think Sharita brought you a report last month, that we think that our vacancy rate is actually lower. So our fill rate is higher for the number of teachers or vacancies that we typically have at this time. So we don't know if it's due to the oil shortage, other layoffs in other industries, but that's a pretty good number for us.
And, and then the, to drill down just a little bit more, what is our absentee rate, and how does that compare to, say, a non-COVID time period?
I have that too. I'm sorry, I was, I just had my.
We currently don't have the absentee rate for this year. Last year, the absentee rate was about four percent.
So do we think?
I think it was about four point six, something like that.
So do we think it's higher or lower for this year?
Higher. I can't tell you right now. When I look at the number of absences, they seem to be on trend, and we're even tracking the number related to COVID. So I can't say from a percentage perspective that, that it's significantly higher at this point in time. I can't say that, but we can get that data for you.
Yeah, and really, what I'm, I'm looking for is that in an alarming number, you know, so I firmly believe we have this to deal with all this year, but we're going to have it to deal with next year. So is there anything in the numbers that need us to be, to be aware of as you all manage the human capital situation? I think I said that as nicely as I could.
You did.
So yes, that did answer my questions, and, and I'll look for that answer when you all have time to, to get it to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, on Goal One, I'm sorry, Goal Three, Number One, that'd be a challenging aspect, but it's nice to, to hear that it's being sought, sought after.
We think if we can hire a hundred pre-K teachers in a hundred days, we can fill, do that.
I believe you can do anything that you put your mind to, Deborah. I absolutely believe that. And absolutely, the, Number Four, that was a genuine concern. I believe I spoke to you about that before COVID started, about, on my visits, there was a genuine concern about this substitution, the sub, you know, coming in for each school that we were visiting. I usually asked what's most challenging to them, and most of the principals were saying the, you know, getting the, the subs in there and stuff. So that was quite challenging. It's nice to see that we have a go of a hundred percent on that. And, and in time, I believe you can also accomplish that also, Deborah.
Thank you.
Absolutely outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stewart, I, I had heard about the permanent subs, and I think that's an awesome idea. I mean, you really solved a couple of things. Number one, having to go from school to school, you don't know kind of what's, what they're bringing with them, or what they're involved with. But for a school principal to know that they're going to have a sub there is just, that's phenomenal. And I, I also, and I'm, I'm kind of like what Tom said, I think when you take, I'm looking forward to the survey coming back and finding out what, what one of the negatives is. Because when we ran the last time, that was one of the things that I heard from substitutes were, you really haven't changed the salary of substitute in a while. So I'm sure that's going to be part of it, so that'll be good information. And I know we've got the Ready Set Teach that we have implemented, and when I look at that goal, or the Number One, under the targets, I really wish we could encourage diversity, more diversity on the Ready Set Teach, because in, at Texas State, one of the things I found out was, to get into the department or the College of Education, they had to take a test to be accepted, and there was a cost to it, like seventy-five or a hundred dollars. And so they were starting to not get kids to apply, and it turned out, they did away with the cost of the test, and the diversity increased. So it might be something, I know that we don't do that here, but I think we just need to encourage a diverse amount of kids to come into that Ready Set Teach. That's just my feeling. And I think you've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think we went around.
Okay.
Dr. Henry, do you have a question? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Tom?
Deborah, I, I seem to recall on that permanent sub.
Yes, sir.
Did we try that on a trial basis before COVID? And the only reason why I mentioned it is I heard something about that, once again, from one of the people in my Sunday School class, that they were a sub, but they were like a floater sub, but they were assigned just to one school.
So it was probably something unofficial, because some of the subs will only go to one school, and I would doubt that there's ever a time where any of our campuses are one hundred percent, all the teachers are there. You know, they're either doing a field trip, or pull out, or they're, they're out. And so some of our subs select a campus, and they're there every day, and they appear to be like a permanent sub. What was different, again, about this process is that the principals were able to interview the subs, invite them to be a part of their campus. The pay rate was different, the frequency of pay was different, and the fact that they were able to start, when the teachers started, to do all of that professional development. So they were right there with them, and so that was a, it was a more structured process.
I love that idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Goal Four, Communications and Community Relations. The district will foster a cultural trust by providing accurate, timely, interactive communication to all stakeholders, and encouraging parents and the community at large to be involved in CF ISD schools. Ms. Hall?
Okay, on Goal Four, you'll see the recommendations for modifications to the individual objectives. On Objective One, really, we're just moving from an implementation stage to a maintained stage, and updating that language and the year in which we will report that. Same modification on Objective Two. Three and Four are remaining unchanged. I will say, on Objective Three, we had a lot of discussion about this. We feel like this objective needs to remain a part of our focus. We were so hopeful that this fall, we would be launching a very, very comprehensive, strategic customer service model, but once we shut down in March, we were unable to move forward with that. We had even gone through an RFP process, had selected a vendor, was ready to bring, we were ready to bring a contract to you in March, and so all of that's been placed on hold, but we felt it was important to leave that objective as part of the board monitoring system, because our focus on that area has not changed, obviously. By having all of our, not, by not having all of our students on campus, the, the current instructional model doesn't lend itself really to launching a customer service plan. So we're going to continue to focus on that, hopefully in the spring, and bring something to you for next school year. The last objective is a new objective that we are recommending. This objective, Implement Communicate, and New Communication Tools and Restructure Department Tool, helps if I put my glasses on. I can't read it. Implement New Communication Tools and Restructure Department Roles and Responsibilities to Enhance Effectiveness and Efficiency of the Communication Department. Really, what we're continuing to do is look at ways that we can more effectively provide communication, not only in district, but also to our community at large. And as we look at the methods in which people want to receive communication and information, that continues to change and be modified. We are excited about the redesign of the website. Last month, you approved the contract with Blackboard, so we're getting ready to launch all of that work and begin working. It'll be a year-long project of redesigning our website, which is probably our key communication tool for the district, and also a key marketing tool. It allows us to get our brand out there. I do think a lot of the restructuring of the department, even with the resignation of Dave DeJean, that has allowed the opportunity for us to stop with any resignation. We want to stop and look at if any restructuring that may need to occur, shifting of roles and responsibilities, so that we can be more effective and efficient in that department. Our Communication Department is extremely lean. For a district our size, really is a small department, but they are incredibly effective and efficient, but we're always looking for ways to improve that. So that's the, the purpose of that new objective. Also, in that Evidence of Progress, you'll see the implementation of Remind. That is a new program that we purchased at a district level for all of our classroom teachers. That is an opportunity for them to provide immediate communication to all of their parents. I know that was highly effective this week, when we had some technology issues, that many of the teachers that were already using Remind immediately used that as a tool to text their students and parents that are connect, that we're having technology issues, here's the Zoom link, so that they could join the class. I think Ms. Francis shared that about fifty-one of our, one percent of our stu, our teachers, rather, are currently using Remind, but we just launched that program after the school year started. So I think that as the year progresses, we'll continue to train, continue to push the use of that, and we'll see great increase, and then obviously, with that becomes more effective communication. So we'll be happy to answer any questions or any recommendations that you may have.
Ms. Blacksher, I'm going to start with you. Do you have anything?
No, it, I'm happy to see that, that you're maintaining your marketing plan and going that direction, because I feel like it's been highly successful since we started doing it, and the message of opportunity for all. I think probably, if everyone in the community isn't aware of it, I would, they should be, because we really, I'd say, we all have really worked hard on getting that message out, and you know, you do have to tell your story, what you're about. And I feel like our communications department has done an excellent job of doing that, and it looks like it's a great goal to me, very good.
Thank you. Dr. Ocatree?
No, it really looks good. We really have done, I think, a solid job in communication, and I think, I'd like to keep them, you know, along their life path, every line of the, of the, of the, of the case.
Ms. Jackson?
I've always been a big fan of feedback loops, and feedback loops are very difficult to, to implement. We call that our customer service model. But the feedback's important. I also like the emphasis. But the feedback's important. I also like the emphasis upon employee feedback. The, the concept's important. It's difficult to, to develop it properly for a school district. But I'm glad that you all have kept that in there as an ongoing goal, because I, I still think that, that it will pay the dividends despite the fact that it's difficult to, to conceive and even more difficult to implement.
Ms. Hanneman?
I think our district does a fantastic job from a marketing standpoint and communication standpoint. I applaud our communications team for the amazing work that, that you do. I think that anything we can do to encourage parents and the community to be more involved in our schools and to feel like they have a voice and that, that as key states, that we reach all of our key stakeholders is, those are important investments that we can make. So I encourage us to look at not just ways that we can push information out, but, but let's, how can we make sure that we're pulling information in and receiving feedback and information from our key stakeholders? And, and obviously, technology is a huge part of that, but even just face, you know, town halls or ways where we can, we can give the community more opportunities to speak, whether it's to the board or to the administration, to share their, their thoughts and opinions. I think that's important as well. So I think if we can look at more how we can improve that two-way communication, I think that's, that would bring a lot of value. As far as Remind, Remind, I'll share as a parent, that is like a lifeline. Like some of our, our, some teachers and I know from the band, as a band mom, I mean, we live on Remind. That's a fantastic tool. When Remind changed their structure and they limited the number of users, we lost Remind for a few months. And that was, that was hard. We lost our, our communication lifeline to some of our classroom teachers and to some of our extracurricular activities. So when that came back on, online, it was a relief. So the fact that we're investing more in Remind, I appreciate that as a parent. That's a great tool. Summer Scholars, which was some of our summer school programs, also use Remind to communicate and still do with those, with those students, and it's very effective. So I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Ms. Sarabia?
Yes, the district does an outstanding job. And it's unfortunate that we cannot spend more money to let everybody know how good you guys do, because, because you guys put your funds in what's needed. And in that aspect, it's kind of like when you're refereeing a game and, and nobody notices you and takes part in the game, and you're, you're out of sight, you're out of mind, you're doing a good job, just leave the building, doing good. And that's what you guys do. You guys do an outstanding job. The very rare times that we get, get some negative feedback, it's taken care of. And it's ultimate trust that the community has in you guys, and you guys always come through. And so it's a catch-22 though, but I wish we could get, let everybody know the success of the district and stuff and throughout the administration. As far as Remind, exactly what Julie said, we lost it for a little bit there. A few months ago, I've been on Remind, going on three years already, and it is, it works so good. And I, when I heard that right now, I was like, oh, yay, I know, good, good. So anyways, great job again, district and everything else, and kudos for everybody.
So Remind's kind of like the old phone trees we used to use. Is that what that is? Not anything like it. Well, that's good. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Appreciate it. Goal five, financial management. The district will exercise physical responsibility and maintain financial strength and provide the financial resources for educational program and support needs. And surprise, it's Ms. Smith up again.
Thank you. The district has associated with financial management, too, I guess you could say, budget-related or fund balance-related items. And really, the only changes to those were the dates that either the evidence of the progress would happen or the timeline for reporting. We also have two items related, one to our bond ratings and one to funding facilities, technology, and programs by selling bonds. And once again, it's only the dates that really changed with these particular items. So I'm ready to answer any questions you might have regarding any of these objectives.
Okay. Dr. Ogletree, do you have anything? Ms. Blackshear? Ms. Hanneman? Mr. Jackson? Oh, my God. Mr. Jackson, nothing on finance? Mrs. Sarabia?
Gilbert, save me. Save me.
Go ahead, Ms. Sarabia. Nothing. And obviously, Karen, I neither. So thank you very much. Great report.
You're welcome.
Goal six, operations management. The district will ensure that facilities, facilities adequately support the educational program and other operations. That would be, whoops, I thought that was Roy Sprague. But I'm wrong. Oh, it is.
I'm over here.
Oh, well, I, I mean, you so.
He's wiping the podium for us.
I thought it was a new reporter. Okay.
His other duties as a son.
Go ahead, Ms. Sprague.
Mr. Covey, thank you. We've made some minor adjustments to our objectives under goal six. Objective one, we feel we need to keep that same goal in place. We did make some progress on some of our centers in, in meeting those target objectives, but some of the centers did not. Obviously, that's affected a lot by the growth in the area, increased road construction and traffic signal lights and all the various things we're dealing with. And then, of course, COVID hit, and then basically, we really don't have much data, obviously, because we shifted the Transportation Department to do other things to support the district and the community. So our recommendation is to keep that goal and try to maintain the targets of 95% for our morning runs and 92% for our afternoon runs. Goal two, really, we've made some progress in the retention of our employees within the department. We want to maintain as a continual target to increase from the previous year by 5%. I am happy to report that in nineteen, I think it was, yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty, we actually increased the retention rate from 72.8% to almost 80%. So Kane and his team are doing a fantastic job in trying to maintain and retain our employees there and continue to look at ways to be creative to maintain that and increase that retention rate. Nutrition services, we want to go ahead, we modified this one. We actually just, it's a minor modification from 26% to 30%. We want to keep it at the 30% target rate. Again, we did see some increases past year. However, COVID hit, we had to shift our resources. But we did see an increase from the previous year, which we were happy to see. But our goal is to continue to work on improving that and increasing that participation rate. On goal four, we previously presented to you in February, earlier this year, of what the overall 2019 bond program schedule would be for all our projects over a seven-year phase schedule. What we're doing now is just modifying this. As part of the bond program, we had many campuses that included furniture replacements and upgrades throughout the district. So our facilities team is working on and wants to continue to develop standards for our elementary and secondary campuses for, across the board, as we continue forward with the implementation of that furniture replacement schedule. And we modified the date for it to be in February of 2021 for that program. We've modified goal fi-, our objective five. We are pretty much have completed all our Phase Six projects, except for the ones that were combined with our Phase One of 2019. So what we've done is just modify this to include that we look at our target date of February 2021 to complete the majority of our 2014 and 2019 combined projects as we continue forward with our bond program. I think one thing we can say, we have not lost any progress in our bond program strategies. That's one thing we've been able to continue to move forward with despite COVID. Our contractors have been very willing to work on our project sites, and they're appreciative of the work. In fact, we were able to start a lot of our projects, as I've mentioned previously to the board earlier, because of COVID, because we could get into the buildings and get work done during the normal school year when we normally can't do that and have to do some of that work over the summer months with that. Goal six really is no changes. We want to continue with that. We made good progress over the last year in terms of increasing our work order completion rate. In eighteen nineteen, we were at about 96%, nineteen twenty. And again, this was one of the benefits, I guess we could say, if there's a positive about a COVID, it allowed our maintenance teams to get into our buildings and, and really catch up on work orders and improve that completion rate for the, the district. But we feel that's a very important goal, and we want to continue to have that to try to get to 100% if we can, to stay on top of that completely. And as a result of that, and, and we really know that preventive maintenance and, and these, because we do work orders for our preventive maintenance, as well as repairs and, and adjustments we need to make. But as a result of that, we've recorded approximately $1.2 million in utility savings, which is great that we can put back into the coffers to help support our other educational programs and hopefully offset some of these other expenses that you've heard previously tonight regarding COVID. Goal seven, it's a modification. The, you know, last go-round, we were monitoring and making adjustments to our C E E P program, which is our Campus Energy Education Program. We had implemented that in the elementary school level. We've been monitoring it, evaluating it, and making adjustments. So we want to modify that goal to include our middle school campuses for this current year. Now, the challenge we have, I'll say this, as a result of the program going through February of 2020, we basically had to halt the program as a result of COVID. But we did achieve approximately $71,000 savings, documented savings, as a result of that program. And you might have seen some things on Twitter and Facebook of our students getting actively involved at the campuses and doing kind of energy audits and, and looking at classrooms when lights are left on when the light should be off. And, and that has made a big difference at those elementary school levels. We actually think, because we stopped in, in February, we probably could have achieved maybe close to 100,000 if we were able to go through the entire school year for that fiscal year to do that. But our goal now is to implement it at our middle school campuses throughout the district. And that is it for us, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Hanneman, do you have anything?
I don't have anything specifically on that goal, but I had, do you have some other comments before we finish this topic? I'll, we'll, after we do this goal.
Okay. Dr. Ogletree? Ms. Blackshear?
Just a, just a comment that I'm really proud of, I guess I'll take this off. I'm really proud of our school district and the excellent job that we do, particularly our facilities, planning and construction do of keeping our schools maintained and up to date. And I don't know of another school district that does such a great job as we do. I mean, you look what we've done with Bain Elementary, just to name one, and other schools. Lambkin is another one. My boys attended Lambkin probably 30 years ago or more. And, you know, just, it's just, I really feel the quality of our facilities can, helps to contribute to the education of our students, because when you go into a, a facility to a school that is bright and welcoming and, you know, you don't have things that are broken and walls that are messed up, it just really can, you know, makes a positive environment for our students. And I just, I think the goals are great, and I think our departments do a great job of that. Our buses are another example. Our Transportation Department maintaining our buses and the way, because we do maintain them, we get more life out of them. And great job to Transportation as well. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
A couple of minor, when we take a look at item number six, which is goal six. Each of the last several board meetings, we have talked about enhancing our air quality. And of course, ever since I've been at JFPE, you and I have chatted about this on all kinds of different fronts. I'm wondering if item number six is not a place where we, we continue to talk about air quality. I know that you've reported to us that many, but perhaps not all have the filtration system that we really like to have. And certainly, that will cost dollars. But I would, I would certainly like to see us strive to, to have that across the board. Because once again, as Mark pointed out, a hundred and two years ago, the Spanish Flu campaign, and that's, Spanish Flu is still here, it's high bay. So the owners would be with us. And I'm not saying that that is the right answer. It's not my area of special, specialization. But I do think it's something that we need to look at. And if it is the appropriate answer, then I think we ought to look at those and then just point to all.
And one of the things we always do, Mr. Jackson, not only just on HVAC, we are always looking at how we can improve our end product. So as we go through this bond program in 2019, we do have some HVAC upgrades. We will be looking at those systems and possibly being able to incorporate where these systems can handle a higher MERV-type filter in the system or look at different ways to increase our ventilation at these campuses to deal with this virus and whatever may happen in the future. I do anticipate some of the building codes will probably be upgraded in the next year or so, based on ASHRAE guidelines, which then most cities and our, our counties will adopt typically as a code requirement. I'm glad you brought this matter up, because the one thing I did want to point out related to this goal, even though we are going to do our best to reduce the energy usage, but as I've reported previously to the board, we have increased our runtimes approximately six hours per day, five days a week, in order to increase the ventilation rates and, and provide more fresh air as much as we can within our buildings. That's going to have a significant utility cost. So unfortunately, I'm not sure we will see savings on this, what I'm hoping it will do, that we can actually reduce dollars to where it becomes a net zero impact to our maintenance and operation budget for the district.
Really, my other follow-up point, because I have a question mark on item number seven, where we say, comparing the utility bills from last year to this year, it makes sense to make the comparison, but we have to do it from a contextual perspective. And they would have to know that as far as they did in fact, in building and plumbing laws to implement their quality, their safety. And there is a cost to it. Very good.
Ms. Sarabia?
Yes, to Transportation, who is going to be looking at more challenges with the upcoming more students that you're going to be bringing and taking back home safely. Outstanding, outstanding job there, guys. Nutrition, of course. And Roy, with, you answered the own question, the number five I was going to ask about the COVID-infected time. You actually got to get into buildings and, and, and do work while the COVID was, was going on and stuff, and that's reassuring and quite evident of the district throughout. I pass by Blile almost daily, and you see the work going on there. And of course, with the, the last campus being built, Roy, just outstanding job. So great job done, Roy.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprague, you, you always impress me with how much your team does. And I'm, I'm a, anytime I drive around through this district and I see the facilities that we have, and if I have visitors, I am so proud to take them around and show them even our oldest schools and show what we've done to improve them and bring them up. And I said this a few years ago, when we were doing one on the Far East Side, and I just happened to be in there, and I'd been reading to classes there. And I'll never forget, a, a parent came up to me, and she was visiting her child at lunch, and she asked if I was on the board, and I told her I was. And she said, I just want you to know, I never thought we'd have this nice of a school where we live. Now, I'm going to tell you right now, that's a district that takes everybody into consideration and wants them to have exactly the same or as close to same as we possibly can. So I appreciate everything that your team does. I always look forward to new things. And I, I really like to look at the remodels, so I think y'all do a great job on that, too. So thank you and your whole team. And I also want to thank everybody that made a presentation. Dr. Macias, who I know is paying very. Dr. Macias, who I know is paying very close attention to what I'm saying. And, um, Karen Smith, who's also extremely attuned. And Teresa Hull, who's right on top of everything. And Deborah, you're the only one paying attention. So I'll just say, y'all run some awesome departments. And I'm just teasing you because y'all are the reason that we do as well as we do. And I can't tell you how awesome it is to have the opportunity to work alongside of you and to see y'all supporting our superintendent. Uh, I will tell you that whenever we go to any conventions or any gatherings, uh, Cyfair has brought up a number of times as an example of the way things should be run. So thank y'all for doing what you do. You know, I'm just teasing with you, but I'm going to tell you right now, I'm cutting this short because we need a five-minute break.
Bob, Julie, Julie wanted to.
Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, Julie, you had a point.
I did, but if you need to take a break, we.
I can handle it.
Okay, all right, I'll go fast. Okay, I'll try. So I was thinking about, um, the comments, um, uh, that Mr. Jackson made about, um, possibly adding, um, something about, uh, creating, implementing and maintaining or measuring our health and safety protocols under goal, I think it was under goal number two, that, that's something, since that's such a significant investment for us this year, it's something that probably should be added. Um, that makes sense, which, then I was sitting here thinking more about that, what else are, are we investing in that are very important to us that we may want to think about adding? And, um, two other items just to consider is, one, looking at our enrollment. If, if a concern is the drop in enrollment, should we be looking at adding that as something could, to, to measure, to monitor, to, um, I think that's something we need to think about adding, looking at our enrollment. And then also teacher retention. We're anticipating that may be an issue moving forward. And so what can we be doing this year to ensure that we are retaining our teachers moving forward? So those are two things I would like to, us to consider adding. Um, I know we, we maybe, this is not the time to do that, so I'd be happy to volunteer to work with whoever is, wants to work on that, um, to add those if the, if, uh, the rest of the board feels that that's something that should be added.
I think your, your suggestions have been duly noted and I'm quite sure we will see some kind of addendum and our change. Uh, did you have something? No, I can handle it. Go ahead.
Okay, just, just one thing that I think is maybe a little bit of an oversight on our part, that, uh, I, I think the board at least should consider because we've moved into this LTE one-to-one, uh, program. I think somewhere along the lines, whether it's in goal one or maybe it's all the way back in Roy's area, I think we need to have some goal related, uh, to that because we're talking about a major expense and a major change in how we do things. So not sure what that goal is, but we'll work with the team and maybe if y'all are in agreement, come, come back and try to.
Can I ask a process question too? I know that, it feels like we're putting all this on you to do these, make these goals for us. I mean, if they're the board monitoring system and if the board, like, should, should we be participating?
Y'all kind of make the decisions and then we formulate the, uh, objectives and then y'all add and change as you see necessary. You have final say.
Okay. I'm just, I'm not, I'm, I'm just like, I feel like we're making you do all the work and I feel like if it's our board goals, we should be like doing some of the.
Yeah, you, you are tonight.
Okay, I'm just, okay, I'm just seeing.
We, uh, we, we really feel like.
Still learning.
We, well, we, we want to take what you want and put it in, into words and we feel like that's our job. In fact, I've always felt like it's the board's job to say, we'd like to see this happen and it's our job to try to figure out how to make it happen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, John, you, did you have something? No? You were pointing out, okay. Okay. We're taking a break, everybody, five minutes. Okay. The board will proceed with the consensus action items portion of the agenda. Nine A, the board will consider approving the minutes of September 14th, 2020. May we move this to, uh, this is consent, never mind. The board will proceed with the non-consent action items portion of the agenda. Ten A, the board consider awarding bids and contracts and are authorizing purchase orders as recommended, the posted agenda item. Ten A one, desk and tabletop protective dividers. Ten A two, zoner annual service agreement. Uh, questions tonight? Does anyone have any questions? Can we move this to consent? Thank you. Ten B, the board consider approving a continuing education workforce agreement between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and Lone Star College. Again, nothing but questions tonight? Does anyone have any questions? Can we move to consent? Thank you. Ten C, the board will consider approving and submitting to the commissioner of education a request for maximum class size waiver. Questions tonight? Anyone have any questions? Mr. Jackson? Okay.
Dr. Stewart, uh, you like CFO Smith. I'm, I know you already know what my questions are going to be. When I served on the CLC, I had to come to this board to ask. It is. My voice just doesn't work that well. You know, I've used up too many words. I have a word allotment and I'm into tomorrow's allotment. But we asked this board permission to go to Austin and say, we needed waivers. As a taxpayer, as a citizen, it was a great idea. As a trustee, I have a different view of the matter. Particularly in time of COVID, we're asking for waivers. Tell me why this is a good idea.
Well, um, to echo what Dr. Henry has said, this year truly, when principals are saying, I need this, I need additional staff, I need desks, we are really trying to make those things happen for them. So if you'll notice, last year, we had 15 campuses that requested waivers and this year, 10. Out of those 10, approximately three of them are requesting waivers because of limited space. So even if they had another teacher, that there's not an available classroom. And let me just share that the waivers, 22 to one, that's per teacher, are the, uh, teacher of record. And that is whether those students are online, connect, or combination, the teacher has 10 connect and five face-to-face, or all of her 15 or 22 students are face-to-face. So a few of those that are here are requesting because there isn't any more space. The others are requesting that they not, um, have an additional teacher because of all of the flexibility and movement of the students. And so if you'll notice, there may be a classroom that has 23 students and so that's over the ratio. And there's a teacher that may have 21. And so the principal could make the decision to move one out of the 23 down to the 21, but she may get another student. So at this time of the year, kids have been out of class and moving about in this different learning environment. They thought it best not to make any adjustments for those that did not, uh, want an additional teacher. And then we have a few that may have 23 kids and they have a teacher that's teaching all connect. And they have another class that has 15, but they're all face-to-face. And that principal makes a decision, my teacher that has 23 connect is doing an excellent job, a veteran teacher, and at this time, I don't want to change that. Because in November, when the grading cycle changes, there may be some massive changes anyway. So they all were very thoughtful about why to make the, um, to ask for a waiver. And the numbers are low. There may be, uh, a fifth grade unit with seven teachers and two of the seven might have 23.
The numbers are low. Uh, you did anticipate my question by a comparison of this year to last year, so thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Uh, you made a very important statement and I'm going to ask you to repeat it. You said that for a number of the campuses, we asked for a waiver because there was no more room. Are you saying that all the classrooms were full?
Um, the classrooms might not have been full, but let's say that there's a classroom that may have, um, 10 face-to-face students and 12, 13 connect students. So that's 23, I think. And so to, maybe they are. And then now to say, uh, Deborah, we need another teacher, if I had another teacher, I would dissolve that class, then they would need either a portable or there's not the classroom space. And so we do have a few that, um, you know, we're doing social distancing and keeping the kids as far apart as we can and so that there is not space. And that's one of the, um, the state says if there's limited space, financial reasons. Um, so that is one of the, the reasons to request a waiver.
The, the comment that you made that resonated with me is when you said, even if we hired another teacher, it would not work on that particular campus because of lack of space.
Correct.
So if you would stay there while I pivot now over to Roy.
I don't know if I want you to pivot.
That would make two of us.
You know, it's not a pretty picture. Roy, where do we stand on our portable buildings?
We have, right now, we have 273 portable buildings in the district. And based on our last observations, we believe we have six portables that are available for use. So if we need to move any additional portables, we have six in inventory that can be relocated, uh, to support, uh, our campuses.
So we're down to six. I know in years past, because this has always been a favorite question of Bob's, many years we had many more than six. Uh, but you always kept the air conditioning running so that the buildings were always in shape should we need them. But we're down to six.
Yes, sir.
For the entire district.
Right.
Thank you. And Dr. Stewart, thank you.
Thank you.